It's Tuesday, January 17th. The time is 9:36 a.m. I called to order the meeting, regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today, our invocation will be led by Charlton Holt, pastor of Woodlawn Campus Church of the Highlands, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Latonya Tate. If you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, let's pray. Um, God, we just come before you today, just thanking you for your goodness and your grace, God. Scripture tells us that if my people are called by my name, if they will humble themselves and pray, that you will heal our nation, God. And so, we come in accordance with that scripture, God, humbling ourselves to pray, not only for our nation, but for our city, God, our great city of Birmingham, Alabama, God. I pray just for our mayor, all of our city council, our city staff people, all of our workers and officials, God, I pray that you cover them, God, may they know that not only are they appointed and elected by the city of Birmingham, but they are appointed and elected by you as well, God. So, I'm praying that you just give them wisdom, you give them guidance in their decisions, God. I pray that you protect their family, in Jesus' name, God. I'm praying for every decision today, God, may it be infused by you through your Holy Spirit, God. I'm just praying that you reside with us in this place. It says, "Where two or more gather, you will be there as well," God. So, we just thank you for meeting with us and gathering with us as well, God. Again, as we are going through our agenda and objectives, God, and making decisions, God, I pray that heaven will be glorified, God, that everything that we do will be a picture of you, God. So, be with us. Thank you for our city, God. Continue to cover us and bless us, and we pray this in your powerful name. All the people of Birmingham, say aloud, "Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Pastor Holt, for that very thought-provoking and moving prayer. We appreciate you this morning. Thank you very much. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilmember Quinn. Councilmember Tate. President. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Wood.
Present.
Council President Pro Tim Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, present. Counselors, I am asking for a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the previous meetings of August 23rd and August 30th, 2022.
Similar second.
Those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready from September 6, 2022, through January 10, 2023. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning, Madam President. Good morning to the entire council, as well as good morning to the public. Madam President and council, it's good to see you all this morning. I have a few lengthy notes. I'll try to get through them as fast as possible, Madam President and council. But I want to start with the makeup day as it relates to trash pickup. Since the city offices were closed yesterday in observance of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, residents in the uniform trash cart program with the Monday pickup day will have their garbage removed tomorrow. That is January 18th. All the residents with the Monday trash pickup will have their garbage removed on Thursday, January 19th. Speaking of the uniform trash bins, as you know, as a reminder, for the 20,000 households using a new uniform garbage cart, we will continue to share this information on repeat. Please remember that garbage must be bagged and placed inside the complimentary 96-gallon cart. If it is placed on the ground beside the cart or on top of the cart, it will not be picked up. Residents using the new carts should place their carts in front of their homes. Any household garbage placed on the ground or alleys or on the ground in front of the residents will not be picked up as well. Again, you can receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup or simply by texting BHAMREADY to 888-777. Madam President and council, as you know, the state of Alabama received significant storm damage in several counties last week, including Dallas County and seat city Selma. 19 city of Birmingham Public Works employees traveled to Selma to partner with the city of Hoover, employees to remove debris from roadways as part of the Selma relief effort. They left this past Friday and worked through the weekend. And so, I want to thank Josh Yates and his team. I also want to thank Mayor Frank Bracato and his team for deployment of resources to be a good neighbor and assist the city of Selma. In addition to that, the city of Birmingham, along with Christian Service Mission and Will Wrecker Service, will host a supply drive for the residents of Selma, Alabama from today, Tuesday, January 17th through Thursday, January 19th. Those wishing to support the drive may drop off supplies at Boutwell Auditorium located at 1930 Reverend Abraham Wood Jr. Boulevard. Donations will be accepted from 7:30 a.m. this morning to 4:00 p.m. each day. Requested items include a lot, not going to list them all. Body wash, bottled water, clean supplies, feminine hygiene products, first aid supplies, paper towels, and the list continues. Will Wrecker, as a partner, has agreed to transport the collected items to Selma, so I want to thank them in advance. Madam President and council, as you know, due to weather and other unforeseen circumstances, the date for the Ramsey Football Championship Parade has changed a few times, but is officially locked in this Friday, January 20th. Please join us as we celebrate the recent state football championships with the parade downtown, starting at 11:00 a.m., and it will start in front of the Boutwell Auditorium. Also, I want to share with this council that's strongly led, that's led by some very strong women, about the Women for Strong Her campaign this March. If you know a woman who lives, works, or volunteers, or attends schools in Birmingham and is making a big difference in the Magic City, please nominate her for the Strong Her Annual Campaign that highlights unsung heroes. Honor reason will be profiled on the city's social media pages in the month of March, every single day for Women's History Month. The deadline to apply is this Friday, January 20th, and you can send nominations to strongher@birminghamal.gov or visit birminghamal.gov/strongher for more information. The Sloss Story to air, let me repeat that, the Sloss Story will air on APTV. You can learn about the history of Sloss Ferns and how it's related to the founding of Birmingham on Alabama Public Television this Thursday. Again, that's this Thursday, January 19th at 8:00 p.m. As you know, council, we've been talking about Page Pals for a considerable amount of time. This is in response to the state of Alabama passing a law that says that third graders are not reading by third grade level, they will be automatically held behind. That law goes into effect, goes into effect next school year that starts the fall, August of 2023. However, I do want to thank Senator Smith, Smitherman, for making sure that wasn't in effect now due to COVID and many other things. However, we're not waiting on the law to take effect. We're wanting to create an army of reading volunteers through the Page Pals. As a note, Page Pals is the city of Birmingham's partnership with the Birmingham City Schools to produce more effective third-grade student readers, both inside and outside of the classroom. Last semester, 179 volunteers logged 410 hours of reading with our students. But with your help, we can increase those numbers, which we really need to do. Volunteers are needed to assist at designated third-grade library times through read aloud conversation. Reading sessions will take place in 14 different Birmingham City elementary schools across all nine districts. I want to encourage everyone in the community to please sign up for BHAM, sign up for Page Pals at bhmufirst.org-page-pals. Again, that's bhmufirst.org-page-pals, which is a mouthful, but please sign up to select your school in time. One last note, Madam President, and as I say this, I want to ask Sue Johnson, CEO of Big Brothers and Big Sisters, as well as Kimberly Jackson, the board president, and any of the other supporters, members, team members, board members of Big Brothers and Big Sisters to come forth as I share some important things related to Big Brothers and Big Sisters.
Hello. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Madam President and council, as you know, or if you did not know, for the past 50 years, Big Brothers and Big Sisters has operated under the belief that every child, every child has the ability to succeed and thrive in life. Their important work in mentoring our youth has made a significant impact in our city. As I shared a few minutes ago, Sue Johnson, who is the CEO of Big Brothers and Big Sisters, as well as Kimberly Jackson, the board president, and I imagine many of their other team members are standing here, and we wanted to publicly salute them, thank them, as well as to continue to encourage them for the hard work they're doing in the community related to investing in our youngest generation. So, at this time, Madam President and council, I will read a proclamation, not in its entirety, but a portion of it, and then allow Madam CEO to stand before you and give a few words. In the states where, as the residents of Birmingham, Alabama, recognize that the city's success depends on helping every child succeed in school, reach their full potential in life, and realize that young people need a solid foundation of support that will help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens. And whereas thousands of Birmingham children are in need of a caring adult mentor, and so many adults are ready to serve, and when they serve, they are filling this mentoring gap with their strong investment in partnerships and volunteers ready to make a difference in a child's life. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters has served over 24,000 children in one-to-one mentoring relationships in the Birmingham area for 50 years, however, Big Brothers and Big Sisters still has children waiting and in need of mentors, and they encourage, especially men, to become mentors for children in need. Now, therefore, I, Randall L. Wood, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim this month of January, as National Mentoring Month in Birmingham, and I encourage all residents to salute and do the same. And again, we want to publicly thank Big Brothers and Big Sisters.
Thank you so much, Mayor Woodfin, and thank you to the city council for your support of Big Brothers and Big Sisters. I would like to introduce Kimberly Jackson, who is our board president. She's got a few things to say, and standing with us today are some of our Big Brothers and Big Sisters who have come down to show their support and recognize. And I also want to say that we are celebrating 50 years of mentoring in Birmingham. So, we were founded in 1973, so this is a big year for Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Thank you, Sue. Good morning. I'm delighted to see such, so many friendly faces on the dais this morning, but for those of you who do not know me, I am Kimberly Jackson, again, the newly-elected board chair of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Greater Birmingham. It's an honor to stand before you this morning, representing our board of directors, the agency, and all of the volunteers who are truly the heart of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We are deeply appreciative to Mayor Woodfin, members of the city council, the staff, and the entire city of Birmingham to receive this proclamation, recognizing our work in the community, and we are grateful for your support of the agency and the children and families we serve. Without your support, we could not reach the nearly 1,200 or 1,200-plus children that we reach each year with mentors. The BBBS vision, and that's Big Brothers, Big Sisters' vision, is for all youth to achieve their full potential. Our mission is to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and the promise of the youth in Birmingham. A little history about Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We are the oldest mentoring agency in the U.S., being founded in 1903 in New York City. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Greater Birmingham, like Sue mentioned, was founded in 1973 and became a United Way agency in 1979. Again, this year, we are celebrating our 50th anniversary, which is a tremendous milestone for our agency. We have great stability in our leadership in Sue Johnson, who's a long-term CEO who has worked tirelessly for the agency for more than 28 years. We estimate that Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Greater Birmingham has mentored over 25,000 children in the past 50 years in one-to-one individual mentor relationships. I will now turn it back over to Sue Johnson. Thank you.
I promise we're going to wrap this up real quick. Keep it short, right? Just a few of our outcomes, I think, we think this is important that you know this. By partnering with parents, volunteers, and community partners, we are accountable for each child in our community achieving higher aspirations, greater confidence, and better relationship with others, avoidance of risky behaviors, educational achievement, strengthened sense of self-worth at home and school in the community. A study conducted by Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America found that children matched in the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program were 27% less likely to start using alcohol, 33% less likely to engage in violent behavior, 46% less likely to become involved in using drugs, and 52% less likely to skip school. Those are significant markers, and I encourage your support of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Thank you so much for this recognition. We're proud to be here.
Madam President, as I close out, I want to do share with the public that I will be delivering and giving the state of the city, state of the city today at the Kiwanis Luncheon. I'm excited. I want to personally thank this council, though, whatever the state of our city is, it's not just because of me, it's because of our collective. So, I'm grateful, and so, to you, Madam President, to you, Madam Pro Tim, to Councilor Quincy Woods, Hunter Williams, who is not present this morning, to Valerie Abbott, J.T. Moore, Dr. Darlo Quinn, who is not here, Carol Clark, as well as Latonya Tate, I want to thank you all individually and collectively for our continued progress collectively in advancing and improving the quality of life of the city of Birmingham. Look forward to seeing you in a few hours as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Woodfin. I did just want to reiterate the announcements made by Mayor Woodfin regarding the uniform trash bin and those pickups. I am noticing in my district, there is still, sometimes there is a second trash bin that is not the city-provided trash bin, and they're filling up with trash. So, is there any information we can share with the residents other than now they need to, because those bins will not be picked up?
Yes, ma'am. That's still, first of all, good morning, Madam President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council. You're absolutely right. DPW is working on being able to provide the citizens with an update on when they can purchase a second bin, but we do, we'll make sure our Office of Public Information coordinates with our ops team to ensure citizens know they won't be able to pick up those second bins if they're not city-issued. So, we'll provide an update, we'll get with the mayor, provide an update on the timeline from DPW.
Thank you very much. I think that would be very helpful to those citizens, so thank you. All right, counselors, at this time, we will have read the items that are considered for consent, so, Madam Clerk, if you'll lead us to those items, please.
Yes, ma'am. The consent agenda begins on page two with items two, three, and four. On page three with item five. Page four, item 11, and please note on item 11, property number 208 has been requested to be withdrawn. That's on page 13. Property 208 is on page 13. And then we'll go over to page 14, items 12 and 14. Then we go over to page 15, items 15, 16, and 17. Page 16, items 18, 19, and 20. Please note that items 19 and 20 were recommended by the Public Safety Committee. Page 17, items 21 and 22. Page 18, items 23, 24, and 25. Page 19, items 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30. Page 20, items 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35. Page 21, items 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40. Page 22, items 41, 42, 43, and 44. Page 23, items 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49. Page 24, items 50, 51, and 52, and that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Counselors, at this time, are there any items that you would like to have added or removed from the consent agenda? Council Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to remove item number 14. Also, if I have a, just a high-level question about one of the items, I don't want to take it off. Would it be appropriate to ask it now, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Or after we?
Is the item already on consent?
It is.
And you just have a question about it to keep from removing it?
Yeah.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, it's about, should we wait and move in a second? Okay. It's about item number 44 for the food service vendor in City Hall. I was just curious, do we, I didn't see, I know it says unit prices on file in the purchasing office, but do we subsidize the food service or provide guarantees or anything? I'm just asking about kind of high-level, the structure of the contract. I'm glad to see us retaining a vendor.
Thank you, Chief Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm going to clarify your question, because...
I guess I'm asking about the general structure, like what does it take to get a food service vendor in City Hall? Do we have to provide guarantees of sales, or do we have to subsidize in some way? Because I know how fickle we can be, you know, we might all be vegetarian for the new year or whatever.
So, for the menu side of it, that's a conversation we can have with that vendor, but we treat it differently than we did for anybody that was previously in that seat. They pay a rent, and we subsidize the utility costs of them using that space down in the basement.
Okay.
We have put this out for bid, we're just renewing them to keep going, had them for the last two years and...
Okay, so they propose a rent that they're willing to pay?
We propose a rent, and they pay it, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or items that you'd like to have added or removed from consent?
No.
Thank you, Council Clark. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, if I could entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, the vote has started.
All right, thank you. The consent agenda is approved. If you're here for any item that was listed as consent, it has been approved. We hope you have a great day, and we will continue with the rest of our agenda. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the first item?
Yes, ma'am. The first item is on page two, and that's item number one. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2022-00012 to change zone district boundaries from D2, single-family residential district to C2, general commercial district. Filed by Brian Harris of Live Oak Parkway LLC, applicant, representing the owner, Huffman Baptist Church, with a property located at 9701 Parkway East and situated in the northeast quarter of Section 36, Township 16, South Range to West Birmingham, and this is the hearing of all interested parties, and we need a motion.
All right, thank you. Could we have a motion and second so we can bring the item up?
Move the item.
All right, thank you. I will turn this portion of the meeting over to our Chair of Planning and Zoning, Council Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gambrell, would you please read our case?
Yes, ma'am. Tim Gambrell, I serve as chief planner for the city of Birmingham, and this is case ZAC 2022-12 in the Huffman neighborhood, and the proposed use is an automatic car wash. The subject property sits on approximately 1.87 acres of land, currently zone D2, single-family district. Abutting the subject property to the north and west are parcels that are zoned C, C2, contingency, general commercial district. To the south and east of the property, there's zone D2, single-family. This property is in a communal, a community revitalization district. The current zoning, as mentioned, is D2. The applicant's proposal is to develop a car wash, and it will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and will have three to four employees on site any given time. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as general commercial. This general, this commercial district is designed to allow for areas serving a citywide or regional trade area, including shopping, entertainment centers that offer a range of retail and service establishments. The applicant is aware that they will need to go before Zoning Board of Adjustment to seek a variance because their site plan depicts the opening of the Car Wash Bay facing a residential or dwelling district. The parking requirements for the site allow for two stacking spaces per Car Wash Bay. This site plan depicts three lanes with 21 stacking spaces, and so, the site is overparked by 10 striping spaces and 25 stacking, and therefore, will have to comply with the Director of Planning, Engineering, and Permit regarding low-impact... of Planning, Engineering, and Permit regarding low-impact development for the site. If the zoning is approved, this will be a C2 commercial property that will be located adjacent to a dwelling district on the east and south sides of the site. Therefore, a C standard buffer is required per city's ordinance. The updated site plan demonstrates that it is in compliance with these requirements of the zoning ordinance. The redevelopment will have to comply with all the city's stormwater requirements, including stormwater management permit. It will include stormwater management plan meeting during the conceptual phase of the project. All stormwater floodplain and soil erosion ordinances will apply. Birmingham Department of Transportation has reviewed site plan, and there have been a few amendments. Those amendments have satisfied their review. The neighborhood, Huffman Neighborhood Association met at its regular scheduled meeting on August 22, 2022, to review the proposed project and voted to not support the proposed rezoning request. Six votes were to not support, and there was one vote to support. They did list several reasons why they voted that way. They mentioned that the businesses near the intersection of Parkway East and Roboc Drive are low-volume traffic businesses that close between 5:00 and 5:30, and generally fit the neighborhood. The proposed car wash oil change would be operated until 9:00 p.m., creating more noise, traffic in the residential portion of the neighborhood. The ingress egress to the Huffman Road entrance to the potential development would create more congestion for transit system that has a drop-off pickup adjacent to the Huffman Road entrance. Huffman Road is a two-lane residential street that leads directly to neighborhood schools. The traffic flow to the car wash from Huffman Road increases risk and jams for three schools on Huffman Road, Banks Academy, Cornerstone, and Huffman Middle, as well as a daycare. There was a Jiffy Lube formerly on Parkway across the street that is now a car wash. Generally felt to be a blight on the neighborhood by the neighborhood. Car wash, let's see, shop is another auto business that parks cars within two blocks down the Parkway is unsightly. The proposed lot serves as a buffer to residential area, and the egress of commercial operations into the residential face of the neighborhood begins a degradation process, according to the neighborhood. The zoning advisory committee met at a regular scheduled meeting on September 6, 2022, to review the rezoning request and unanimously voted to recommend the rezoning request to the Planning and Zoning Committee. The Planning and Zoning Committee met at a regular scheduled meeting on September 28, 2022, to review the rezoning request and asked that the applicant return to the Huffman Neighborhood Association. And subsequent to that action, the Planning and Zoning Committee met at a regular scheduled meeting on November 9, 2022, to review the rezoning request and voted not to recommend the request to the full council. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. First, we'll hear from the applicant, who will make his or her case for why the property should be rezoned. And then we will hear from any members of the public who wish to either ask questions or make comments. So if you would please introduce yourselves and give us your address and who you represent.
Certainly. Good morning, council members. My name is Brian Harris of Live Oak Parkway LLC, 5268 Greystone Way. I'm here representing myself and my partner in partnership with Huffman Baptist Church, who's here with us as well this morning. As Mr. Gambrell indicated, we're here requesting your support and approval for change of this property to a C2 zoning district. It is owned by Huffman Baptist Church. It's been owned by them for approximately 65 years, which allows, the zoning, current zoning of D2 allows operation as a church. Functionally speaking, it's an institutional-type zoning. They do own the property that abuts this subject property to the south and directly to the west. So we are bordered by Parkway, oh, excuse me, Parkway on the west, Roboc Boulevard on the south, Huffman Road to the east. This is Huffman Baptist Church. Huffman Baptist Church owns this parcel, this parcel, and this parcel. Medially to the north, we have a commercial shopping center. Across the street, we have a bank, a bank on this corner. We are the sole parcel along Parkway East. As you come north from I-4, I-59, that is not currently zoned. Let me make sure I get this right, so I don't misrepresent. It's C1, C2, NUM or NUH, with exception of the church property. Future land use plan, which was, worked on heavily several years back, and neighborhood meetings were held, the conclusion was this property was, in the future, going to be general commercial. It is certainly a commercial corridor, approximately 39,000 cars a day on the state highway, and this is on a signalized corner here on Roboc Boulevard and Parkway We have been to the neighborhood for two official meetings, and we've had two unofficial meetings with them, or informal sit-down conversations around a roundtable to discuss the project, discuss other potential uses, and the result of which is, the reason we're here this morning is, we're of the opinion, based on the other uses that we've been approached by and the feedback we've received from the neighborhood, that this is the most sensible request that would fit in with the neighborhood. I've got with me this morning Pastor Bill Sears, Director Pastor Bill Sears with Huffman Baptist Church, who'd like to speak on behalf of the owner about their intention.
Thank you, Brian. Madam President, misproposed him, counsel. I really appreciate you allowing us to be able to come and present this to you and ask for your support on this. But let me kind of give you a little background how we got here, because in 1908, Huffman Baptist Church, even before there was a neighborhood, came into existence and has been an integral part of that whole area of Birmingham from the very beginning. Probably about 20, 25 years ago, there were, since that time, multiple churches that have either relocated because they thought they were greener pastors in other areas, or they have closed because they just could no longer meet whatever the goal or the desire that they felt like their mission was at that point in time. But about 15, 20 years ago, Huffman Baptist Church made an intentional decision that Huffman is our neighborhood. We're going to continue to minister and make a difference in that neighborhood, to impact and influence that community in the best way we possibly could and work in partnership with them. That didn't really go too well. But about three and a half years ago, Dr. Robert Paul came as pastor, and he began to lay out a vision that helped us determine and set a tone and a direction to create partnerships with other entities or ministries that were making a difference in that community already. And so we've begun a partnership with Elevate, Elevate Birmingham, which is in the Huffman schools, character building, leadership development, under the leadership of Danny Brister, does a great job. We provide them space. They bring students onto our campus that they can continue to mentor. They can continue to make a difference. They help them with homework, not only at Huffman High School, but also Winona High School, and their plans in the future is to incorporate Huffman Middle School and then possibly some others. We partner with the Birmingham Metro Baptist Association, who go into the elementary schools in that area to make a difference and impact with what they call discovery clubs with kids and students. We partner with the Christian Service Mission to help distribute food into the community on a consistent basis to help meet needs in that areas. We partner with Birmingham Urban Young Life, where Cedric Moore is the director, who has clubs and camps all throughout those schools in our area, Huffman Middle School, Huffman High School, as well as other high schools and middle schools in that, in that area. We provide space on our campus for them, for them to be able to bring students, to be able to invest, a safe place, a secure place, that not just those spaces, but also our activities building, our ministry center, our gym is used by that. We partner with Banks Academy, which came into existence a number of years ago, private Christian high school. Many of the students come from that area that's on that campus as well. We partner with Kingdom Family Fellowship, which is a church start targeted also into that community to reach folks within that community as well. Doing so, there were decisions that had to be made, and part of those decisions had to be made. We were using about 25% of our facilities. We had closed down the other 75% because the way you did church 40 years ago is different than the way you do church now. The principles may be the same, but the applications of those principles are different. And so doing so to just maintain existence, we had to quit supporting those buildings, allowing HVAC, allowing electrical, allowing lighting, allowing the deterioration to take place. But as we entered into these partnerships and we understood that we were going to begin to bring the community onto our, onto our campus, we had to begin to upgrade. We have replaced already four with the, with the plan to replace two more HVAC systems. We've had to update and upgrade electrical systems. We've had to redo lighting. We've had to redo facilities at a ton, at a, at a cost of over a quarter of a million dollars in the last year. That was money that was set aside to do ministries and impact and influence the community. So we looked around and said, what can we do? Well, there's only one asset that we have, and that's land. More land than we really needed at that point in time. The most valuable piece of land, the most valuable asset, is that parking lot that's before you today, because it sits on Parkway East. And so since it sits on Parkway East, we explored the possibility, what would it take to be able to sell it? And we had multiple options that was there, and the best, the most feasible, because they're going to be our neighbors too, is, is, is a upscale, nice car wash that would, would be an asset to the community as a whole. Was that ideal? It may not be the most ideal thing. I'll admit that. But it's a good, so, so to be good neighbors, a couple of things that, that we would also be more than willing to do. We own the four corners where that traffic light is, Huffman Road and Roboc Park. We're more than willing to give part of our land, that corner land, and erect an identical "Welcome to the Huffman Neighborhood" sign that is similar to the one that sits across from Huffman High School. So you can begin to create a differentiate between the commercial corridor and where the residential neighborhood begins, because we want them to have a nice gateway moving in there, not a sea of asphalt. So those are the reasons why we've come forth. This is the reason why we're asking you to support this rezoning. We want to continue to impact, influence, and make a difference. And the only thing that we had to be able to help us continue to move forward, when we went to, knowing that our father owns the cattle on Thousand Hill, that just will you sell one cow? So we can continue to make a difference in the Huffman-Roboc area. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And one more thing, if I may add, in speaking to Mr. Gambrell's statement on the variance method, if you'll hold up our site plan, he made reference to the variance that we will have to go get. And I certainly am not one, excuse me, I'm certainly, I have a vertical challenge with the microphone. I'm certainly not one to try and go create a variance for myself in any development that I work on. Unfortunately, the orientation of this property being bound the way it is by church property is being zoned by D2. They do own this southern piece that's D2, and this piece to the east that's D2. And so the orientation of, of our structure currently, and I believe it's in your package, our site plan, the opening will face the church building. And of course, you know, they're in support of that. So that's the variance Mr. Gambrell references. Due to the, you know, the orientation and the road frontages, we're also stuck with that challenge as well, trying to get an in and out of the car wash that, you know, is oriented in a proper way. And that's been presented to the neighborhood as well. One of the results from our four meetings from the neighborhood is we were able to find a way to decrease the density on this site. Originally, we had come in with a car wash and an oil change on this property. And, you know, due to some of the comments we received from the neighborhood, we went ahead and dropped the oil change from this development plan. We dropped some access points that we were originally requesting on Roboc Boulevard. Those are no longer a part of the development plan, and we were able to come back in and add more green space and landscaping that Mr. Gambrell referred to. So the result that, to the site plan from the neighborhood meetings, we were very optimistic about, that we were able to achieve some of the things the neighborhood was looking for, you know, PEP departments looking for, transportation's looking for, and we found a way to be flexible with this development to try to achieve everybody's goals.
Thank you. If y'all would have a seat on the front row in case people have questions after we hear from the public. This is a public hearing. Are there members of the public who are here who wish to speak regarding this issue? So are you all together with one speaker, or do you all intend to speak one speaker? Okay.
My name is Ruthie Finch.
Yeah. We have microphone challenges.
Good morning, good morning. To the city council representatives and to the staff, my name is Ruthie Finch, and I am here representing a spokesperson who is a retired fire captain, Harry Williams. Harry could not be with us today. He had a medical emergency, so he's not with us today. But anyway, this is the part of the Huffman community, and we stand here in solidarity, in unity, and in support of rezoning the property listed in item one of our ordinances today. Are there any questions?
Okay, that, that's it? And everybody lives in the neighborhood?
Yeah, all of these are neighborhood. This is, they are, we are all a part of the Huffman community. We've probably all lived there more than 30 years. I know I might, I've been there 38 years.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, if y'all would have a seat in case, when we get through, we will probably have other questions that we like to ask. So if you would stick around. Thank you.
To the city council, to the council president, and to the mayor and his office, and those who are present. I'm Theodore DeBro, the president of the Huffman Neighborhood Association, and I would like to read the statement from the Huffman Neighborhood Father Rettin. I live at 813 Jeffries Circle, Birmingham, Alabama, 35235. The residents of the Huffman Neighborhood have reviewed the proposed zoning change for the property at 9701 Parkway East from residential to commercial for the use of constructing a car wash, and have voted twice to deny the zoning change for said use. Building a commercial car wash in this location at the Huffman Residential Neighborhood would be a deterrent and be detrimental to the community. The address is on Parkway East, but the egress is on Huffman Road. A car wash would bring more traffic to Huffman Road, where Huffman Middle School, Banks Academy, Cornerstone High School, Huffman United Methodist Daycare, and Parkway Christian Preschool are within three blocks of the proposed car wash, and in an area not designated are designed for such high levels of traffic. The noise from the machines and the cars entering and exiting the car wash would disturb the peace of the neighborhood. The added traffic would also increase the chances of an accident occurring, which would create a hazard to both pedestrians and drivers. The applicant has not shared with the neighborhood that brand, or particulars of the car wash, or any legal assurances of the car wash or consequences after a given period, period, if the business fails or is abandoned. Additionally, the car wash would likely require a large amount of water, which could strain the resources in the area. Finally, the presence of a car wash at this location, which is the gateway to the Huffman Neighborhood, will likely lower the property values in the neighborhood, which could further hurt the community. For these reasons, the commercial car wash should not be built in this location in the Huffman Neighborhood. The ministries, the partnerships that have been given to you just a short while ago are not really services, are men- are not really services or ministries from the church, but businesses where the church is really collecting rent and payments for those services to the neighborhood. The neighborhood is sympathetic to the plight of the Huffman Baptist Church and its decrease in membership and income over the years, and would hope that the city of Birmingham, through some of its economic development resources, can assist the church in finding ways to satisfy their immediate infrastructure needs as defined in the neighborhood. The heating and air conditioning units and other requirements to meet their needs to lease the spaces to others. The building of a car wash is a detriment to the Huffman Neighborhood. We ask that the Huffman Baptist Church, as we stated earlier, would plan with the neighborhood and not for the neighborhood. We are open to work with Huffman Baptist Church for the betterment of our entire community. There were a number of persons who could not come this morning, either for physical reasons or work reasons, but they submitted some emails that they wanted shared with this group. And if time permits, I will read some of those emails or some excerpts.
Excuse me, Mr. DeBro.
Yes.
Were those emails sent to the city council?
Uh, they were not sent to the city council. They were sent to me as a way of voicing their opinion to be shared with the city council.
So how many emails do you have?
Uh, this would just be three. Three persons that are located, uh, right at the entrance to the neighborhood and on Martin Wood, uh, the main street where the car wash would be located.
Okay, um, the pleasure of the council, would you like to hear the? Okay, so yes, please read the emails and tell us who they're from and their address.
Right, this is from Amina Warnick, homeowner on Martin Wood. Absolutely, totally agree with our neighborhood association, that, that proposal will only further deterioration of our community. Do not agree to a car wash in any, in either area. Huffman Baptist Church, um, does not have our community best interest at heart. They only have their selfish needs. I request they sell the church to a business who can bring it and grow the decline in congregation. I feel, uh, it is a reason that they are, they will agree to any means to continue their economic growth for their place of worship. This is from Sunny Campbell, uh, who apologized that she could not be here today, but because of health reasons, she said, sorry, cannot be there. Don't drive anymore, have to get ride to doctor, don't and can't get out like I once could. Can you give a proxy vote of no with this car wash? Thank you for the update and standing up for us. Here at 720 Martin Wood, I'm probably the neighbor closest to that property and will be impacted significantly if it becomes commercial. I feel for the church's financial issues, but perhaps they and the rest of us should pray that God provides another way to help them without causing problems for their neighbors. Personally, I believe we have enough car washes and detail shops in the area to take care of everyone's car cleaning needs. We do not need to bring any additional traffic to this area, especially on Huffman Road. We have middle school age children walking to and from school on Huffman Road. We have other pedestrians constantly walking to the bus stop located adjacent to that parking lot or to some of the nearby stores. It should be noted that since Banks Academy relocated to the church property, there has already been an increase in traffic during school days and for their events. We need to keep these roads safe for the benefit of those coming and going to the church or the school. There is an abnormally large number of accidents at that intersection of Huffman Road and Martin Wood Road, and also the intersection of Parkway East. I believe the police and fire department records will confirm this. I won't be able to make it to the meeting, but please continue to defend us. If the opportunity arises and would be beneficial, please feel free to read and share my comments on this matter.
Members of the council, thanks very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I live in the neighborhood as well. And to your question, I actually did send an email to Mr. DeBro, and I copied it to Councilman Woods and Williams as well. I don't know if you've seen it, I just sent it last night. I am a, a, a music instructor that live up there. During the pandemic era, I moved a lot of my music instructions remote, done remotely, online. And I live up in the neighborhood just behind Huffman United Methodist Church. And, uh, it once was a quiet neighborhood. I love it. I've lived there literally my entire life. After my father died, we moved back in, and now my wife and I live there. But it is hardly a quiet neighborhood anymore because we hear so much from Parkway East, mostly muscle cars and bikes racing up and down, for which we call the police often to, to get them to do something about it. But my main quarrel is with the possibility of the noise pollution that we would have to endure. Just, uh, on my phone, uh, I downloaded an app for measuring sound. This is not a very scientific, uh, it's not, it's not purely scientific, but at least it gave me some sort of idea. From our carport, we maybe get 27 to 32 decibels of volume. When a plane flies overhead, that's about 60 decibels of volume. A leaf blower, maybe five houses down, was about 40 decibels. Now, one thing to understand about volume and decibels, measuring in decibels, is that the, there, even though it says 10, 20 decibel points higher, that actually represents a 10-fold increase in volume. 20 decibels represents a 100-fold increase in volume. 30 decibels, a thousand-fold increase. So as a plane flies overhead, and we're talking 60 decibels versus our 30 that we normally get on a quiet day, we're talking about a thousand times louder. That is the same decibel reading that I get when the occasional muscle car drives by. When I went to Bubba's Express Car Wash, which is another business exactly 1.1 miles from the church, uh, the volume of the massive fans that they have drive, drying out the cars at the end are about 80 decibels. That is 10,000 times the volume of the regular peaceful, uh, carport that I have. That's extremely, extremely loud, and we can hear a lot of these sounds from the parkway in our house with our doors closed and our windows closed, and even our air conditioner running. I can only imagine what this is going to sound like to a house even closer to this car wash, not to mention the disruption that we may suffer because I work from home, as well as my wife, as, as, as does my wife. So we're really concerned about the volume, and I really do urge that this not be approved. As an aside, I don't want to echo anything that he had said, he covered a lot, but there are already two established car wash businesses. There's Latino's, uh, Car Wash, which I know some may consider a blight, but it's an established mom and pop business. And there's Bubba's Express Car Wash. I think we've got, as he mentioned from an email, I think we've got car washes covered pretty well in our neighborhood, and, uh, I don't think this is the best way to use that property. Thank you all for allowing me the chance to speak. I hope you all have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Whitman, for allowing us to speak before you today. I'm Joan Burrows, and I live in the neighborhood. I think we moved there in around 2004. And one of the things that, that I'd like to just reiterate is that many of the neighbors would really like to see things that are more family friendly and did not see a car wash as being anything that was needed, uh, in our neighborhood. And so we kind of voted against that, and people that I've talked to felt that it was not the kind of a business that would serve the community well. And so that, that is the only addition that I'd like to make, uh, that we'd like to have more input in the kinds of things that happen in our neighborhood, and that there are people who are concerned enough to pitch in and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Just wanted to add that we, we certainly have nothing against Huffman Baptist Church. In fact, we want to be supportive of Huffman Baptist Church, but if there is a way that the city could assist us in, uh, helping Huffman Baptist Church meet their needs and their goals, and at the same time not provide a car wash in, uh, on this particular property, we would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Members of the council, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Four. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have another speaker?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. You'll, you'll be first as soon as he speaks.
Hey, uh, my, hello, council. Thank you for this time. Uh, my name is Caleb Sears. I live at 230 Ninth Court West in the College Hills neighborhood. I've worked in the city of Birmingham over the last five years, really to see improvements take place. I partnered with a nonprofit called Common Thread, and we've worked to increase homeownership in the North Tittysville community. And, uh, I've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars and used that. And I've, I've seen the city just come together and help nonprofits and churches who are really trying to make a difference in the communities that they live in. I mean, even one thing in particular, um, was the fact that when we ran through issues with like permitting, the mayor's office was very pivotal in meeting with us. We sat down and talked about things of way that we didn't have to waste money of going through. And so I just ask again to provide help to a, a church and nonprofits in these, especially these ministries that are in Birmingham City Schools that are providing mentorship programs, but that are also like teaching morals and ethics, like Elevate Birmingham and Urban Young Life. I put, I pray that, or I, I plead that you would support those things, and I think transitioning this does do that. And so I ask specifically, Councilman Clark, that you would vote in favor of this, but also everyone as well. Thank you all for the time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I just want to say that I'm, I'm very grateful to see so many residents that, you know, have come out, you know, on both sides to, to speak to this issue and are using their voice. I, I am very familiar with the Elevate Birmingham program. I actually had an opportunity to speak at Huffman High School to some students through their program with Danny Bristow, and, uh, very familiar with Cedric Moore, uh, who is with Young Life, uh, who I know spent some time with Young Life. And so, um, I'm curious, what, what type of, uh, car wash are you planning to put there? Like, I know the residents were saying that they are not familiar with, you know, the, the, I guess, brand of car wash that you're putting there or the franchise, I'm assuming? Like, what, what are you, what are you proposing?
Yes, sir. Uh, well, unfortunately, we're in a little bit of a chicken and egg right now because an operator won't fully commit until hopefully we get a zoning in place, if that makes sense. So it's a little bit of circular logic that we've been running with, with a couple of different operators. We're having one very serious conversation with one currently, who's owns, owns and operates, I believe, between 35 and 40 across the southeast. It is, it is an automated facility. I know in some conversations with a couple of you, uh, we've had conversations about building materials that's being, that are being intended to be used, that we provided a list of, uh, that we're willing to commit to. The, the vacuums will be intended to be surrounded by masonry. To speak to his comment, certainly, we all understand, um, have a general understanding of decibels, and we also understand that distance away from the noise source impacts how many decibels. And, you know, it's just quite frankly, it's not fair to go measure directly next to an airplane or a vacuum or a saxophone and try to correlate that if we're, you know, 500 to 1,000 feet away, the decibels don't correlate. But this automated car wash that we're in conversation with has committed to build, you know, masonry around the vacuums. We do meet city ordinance for spacing from a residence with that spacing from the vacuums. So to answer your question a little more directly, Councilman Moore, um, we can't commit to who that operator will be yet because we don't have a commitment from a brand until we can get a zoning in place. It's a chicken and egg right now.
Got it. And I guess the only other question is, have there been any other ideas of what this space could be besides a car wash? I don't know if there have been any suggestions made by, you know, residents about, you know, what you all, um, could see as a viable option? But has that been explored at all?
It has. I know we've discussed that with a couple of you as well. Then that is a question that we were very well in the field in some of our meetings with the neighborhoods, and it's actually what one of the informal meetings was intended for, is to have a roundtable discussion with any neighbors that wanted to attend. We had Mr. and Ms. DeBro and one other attendee, and then one individual who called in via Zoom, um, to discuss any other opportunities, right? To date, we've had two other uses. I know we've discussed with a couple of you all. We've discussed those with the neighborhood, and again, quite frankly, they just haven't been receptive to, um, development at all on this parcel. We, you know, we've asked the question, we heard, you know, one of the speakers refer to, you know, more family friendly. We're, we're open to ideas, and we have been through this process since early summertime about anything that the neighborhood may be more receptive to. And so far, the, the only real feedback that we've gotten is they want it to remain the way it is and never be developed or to be a park. And so, you know, just keeping in mind the, the other opportunities that have presented themselves for a real viable use for this property. Again, it is why we're in here with this car wash use. We believe it provides a low density on an acre and a half, provides good green space. The traffic that a car wash will generate, it was just not up to par with what these other uses would generate. We know the transportation department's reviewed this use, access points, considering the traffic that's on Parkway East, and that we will have an ingress egress on Parkway East and an ingress egress on Huffman. Transportation Department seemed to believe that it was, you know, in keeping with what they would expect out here.
Gotcha. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other, yes, Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions and comments. The first thing that strikes me is why all these Huffman residents are not going to their neighborhood association meeting? Because if it's important that you participate in your neighborhood association, and, and back in the olden days, that I recall from being in the mayor's office, a zoning decision was like sure to boost participation at a neighborhood meeting. And I think we had a better way of communicating when there was a zoning matter up. But even if, you know, on a typical month, there was only 20 or so, you know, if there was a big zoning thing, everybody came to vote because the neighborhood is the, you know, they, their decision is advisory to us as a city council. And so I just want to not, not really start anything, but just encourage you all, if, if you're not active with your neighborhood association, to please participate and vote, especially at these critical times. But it is advisory. You know, we don't have to, you know, align with the neighborhood decision. The other thing, um, I guess Counselor Moore asked about the franchise. So you do envision being a part, Madam, I don't think, I don't think it's your turn to speak. Okay. You did, you do envision this being a part of a franchise, having a franchise operator that, in my mind, would have some standards across their franchise, uh, some high standards, hopefully. And, um, you know, it's not an independent mom and pop type of operation that you're envisioning?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
One of the conversations we're having is what I would describe as being a regional, southeast regional operator. southeast regional operator that, like I said, they operate between 30 and 40 across the region. And the other discussion we've had over the last six months is more of a national operator. Yes, absolutely.
So, the other question is about the residential district that it's abutting. It's really mostly, immediately abutting property that's residential is mostly church property, correct? And so, churches can exist in any zoning, even though this residential property is in a commercial corridor for which the land use plan suggests that this land would transition to what is being asked, actually, right? I guess that's a Tim Gernberl question because I know that the land use plan should inform future zoning decisions and the land use plan says that this should trend to commercial, correct?
Yeah, I would just say yes. Yeah, and that is correct.
Okay.
And the properties adjacent, I do believe, I think was mentioned already, that all four corners are owned by the church.
Yeah, so my other question of the church is, do you plan to liquidate any of the other property? Because I think if it starts to, you know, if your master plan, I mean, some of it's a green buffer and, I mean...
Great, great question. No, we do not plan to liquidate the others. This one actually sits away by sitting on the north end and it sits directly on Parkway East. And so, there's not a necessity for that because with the property that we already own, there's plenty of paved parking for anything that may happen in the future, any growth that may happen in the future. The lot that would sit to the east of this existing one, catty corner from the main building, is green space that we plan to leave as green space. We don't want to develop it in any way. We want to leave it as green space to make sure there's enough.
So, the other thing I'm going to just note is like 20, I don't know, 20 some odd years ago, when I was Director of Economic Development and I was working in the mayor's office, I worked very closely with two gentlemen, Ronnie Rodham and Joe Hollis. And they were like, they were leftover from the Roebuck Chamber of Commerce and we worked so hard to stabilize that area because, you know, that Parkway was in serious decline. And, you know, as restaurants closed, we had a big empty Kmart, you know, the adult movie, whatever bookstore. Anyway, a lot of stuff got transformed to really try to stabilize that corridor because, I mean, you had a department store left, you certainly had an auto mall out there, but as restaurants were closed, we had a proliferation of payday lenders. And so, the whole tone of that corridor was in serious transition and decline. And, you know, the city made a huge investment to try to stabilize that commercial area, but we still lost TJ Maxx and still lost so many, you know, the home supply store. And I can just think of so many things we lost. And, but I say that to say that the infrastructure out there did support a lot of retail and a lot of traffic, you know, just historically, because it was a really robust commercial area. So, that's all my questions and comments.
Word of note, Ms. Clark. One thing that we are adding is an addendum to the deed that when this piece of property is sowed, that nothing with adult entertainment or anything that sells alcohol will be able to be utilized on that piece of parcel.
Okay. I did, I did think of another question. Now, you're overparked and you've got three stacking lanes instead of two, which is what a lot of them have. Is it three lanes because of the length, the length you're working with, or what's necessitating the third stacking lane, queuing lane or whatever?
Sure. The third stacking lane right now is anticipation of trying to keep that circulation from affecting the ingress egress. So, to your point, they're looking at how many customers they believe they'll bring in in their peak time, and then they spread those out across those entry gates so that this site can maintain the access points and not affect getting in and out of the site. They'll continue to study that as we move forward and make sure that that flow is the way that it needs to be. Obviously, the tunnel starts to control that. You can only wash so many cars per hour, and that truly is what dictates traffic in and out of a car wash, because you can only wash so many cars at a time with one tunnel.
So, you're trying to get the cars onto the property and off of the residential street?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
And we have, well, the nice thing, I'm sorry, is that this is an acre and a half and we have the room to do that. In a lot of instances, you see developments try to squeeze in on a postage stamp and they struggle with their circulation. The nice part about this parcel is we do have the room to do that as well as provide all of the screen space.
I'm sorry, I thought of one more question. A lot of the gas, I'm sorry, the car washes that I looked up, like in Bessemer, I don't really know how they're situated with respect to residential, but they close at seven. And many of the car washes in Birmingham close at eight, and you're proposing to close at nine.
I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gernberl, may I believe the ordinance requires nine o'clock for a car wash operation. Both operators that we're talking with would be willing to cut that back to eight o'clock.
To eight o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think that would be more consistent with other locations that I, I mean, if the information on Google is correct. Also, would you operate on Sunday? And if so, what hours?
Seven days a week. And to my knowledge, it would be normal operating hours, whatever's allowed by ordinance, obviously.
Okay, I'm finally done. I'm sorry.
Are there any other? Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like I said, we've been working through this process for a while now. Do want to appreciate everybody's patience and being willing to come back to the table a number of times to make sure everybody get every question answered, everybody had a full understanding of what was being asked, what was wanted from the neighborhood. I think the neighborhood's been pretty consistent at this point of kind of lifting up their concerns and, you know, I always try to support the neighborhoods and what they're pushing unless there is some clear and obvious benefit to that neighborhood. In this case, I do not think that a car wash necessarily provides any especially beneficial addition to the neighborhood. That in conjunction with there is a new project that's already broken ground that's slated to be a car wash about half a mile further down the Parkway from your proposed location. Both of those kind of combined, you know, I don't see any way to support this project at this time. Like I said, I know we've had good conversations and would like to continue looking to other possibilities. Like I said, I think there are some things that everybody could kind of come together, be excited about, and I think we kind of would continue working to find one of those things. But kind of this project, as stated, adding a car wash to this area is something that I agree with the neighborhood and don't think this is something that we need to move forward with. And I would ask everybody to vote against this rezoning.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, woman, excuse me. Sir, so just to clarify, you're not willing to share what change our franchises, whatever you want to call them, that you're in negotiations with?
Unfortunately, I am under a pretty big confidentiality agreement. Aside from that, I'm never a fan of trying to commit to something that, to be honest, I don't have any signed agreements with them right now and I'm not comfortable committing to something that is not committable because I don't like to make promises that I can't promise. And so, to name a brand right now would be difficult in that fashion.
But I think your earlier statements were that you were in conversations with two different brands. Did I misunderstand that?
We've had conversations. One is extremely serious right now, simply because we like the way they operate and their aesthetics and all of that better to date. Yes.
Thank you. Any other councilmen with questions or comments?
I do have one. And my concern is about noise. You know, the congestion part, it sounds like you're at least working on keeping the congestion on your property instead of out in the public right of way, although obviously you're going to be bringing more vehicles into the neighborhood. But the noise ordinance says that you cannot have your noise impacting people who can clearly hear it 50 feet away. Now, your blowers and fans and car wash, are they going to qualify or are people going to be calling the police complaining about your noise because they can hear it at their house?
Well, to be honest, I'm not familiar with that 50, 50-foot radius. Is this from any business?
It's from anything. Just our ordinance lists, you know, cars, radios, yelling and screaming, dogs barking, birds squawking, you name it. It's listed in the ordinance because we have to cover everything. Every way that people can make noise, including renovating their house at 11 o'clock at night with saws and, you know, hammers and all kinds of things. So, we have an ordinance and I'm just concerned that, I live in a neighborhood and I don't want to listen to blowers and fans and car washes at night. I mean, I personally would not care to do that, so I assume that many other people wouldn't. And I'm just wondering about your ability to keep the noise down from a car wash, because I go to car washes, but they're in commercial areas where there aren't any residents around to listen to it. And if there are residents around to listen to it, you know, I have concerns. So, are your fans and blowers and all that quieter than everyone else's?
I don't know how we can commit to something not being heard from 50 feet away, the same as most operating businesses with some form of, you know, noise creation or vacuum tube like a bank. 50-foot radius from an operating business is a pretty tough threshold to uphold, I would say. So, I don't know how to commit to that, Councilman Abbott. Councilwoman.
Okay. Well, that was just my question because I, we don't have, well, I'll leave it there. I believe that we have exhausted our questions from council members and comments, so I think that we are ready to vote.
Thank you, Councilman Abbott. We also thank the residents and the owner for presenting this information to us. Counselors, we're ready for the vote.
Vote has started.
I need to change my vote. I voted, hit the wrong button.
Oh, okay. Which item?
No. All right. Thank you, counselors. This item does not pass. Next item.
The next item is on page three, item six. A resolution granting an operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to Pete Blank, Birmingham Trolley Tours LLC, 6229 Jonathan's Way, Trustful, Alabama, to be used in the operation of a jitney service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with provisions of, with the provisions of Chapter 12, Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham 1980, as amended or may be amended.
Motion. Second. All right, counselors, this is a resolution that was granting an operating authority permit. There was no recommendation brought forward by the Transportation Committee. Any questions regarding this item?
I'm still trying to figure out what item we're on. It says one up there, but...
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me click on it. There you go.
It's six.
Oh, I did have a question, Madam President. Aside from which item we were on, why is there no recommendation? Is that...
The Councilor Quinn isn't here, but we have a member of the committee that was, Counselor Woods.
Yeah, I believe this was a no quorum issue.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions regarding this item? Are we ready for the vote? We're ready for the vote. That's okay.
Vote has started.
All right. Thank you, counselors. That item passes. Next item.
The next item is item number seven. A resolution granting an operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to Blessed Beyond Transportation, 1508 Five Acre Road, Hurry Town, Alabama, to be used in the operation of a non-emergency medical service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with the provisions of Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham 1980, as amended or may be amended.
Motion. Second.
All right, counselors, this is a resolution granting an operating authority permit to Blessed Beyond Transportation. It was recommended by the Transportation Committee. Any questions regarding this item? We're ready for the vote.
The vote has started.
All right, thank you, counselors. Item number seven passes. Item number eight?
Item number eight, a resolution granting an operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to Call Your Kids Travel LLC, 5238 Mossy Brook Court, Bessemer, Alabama, to be used in the operation of a non-emergency medical service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with the provisions of Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham 1980, as amended or may be amended.
I move approval.
All right, counselors, this is a resolution granting this permit to Call Your Kids Travel LLC. It was recommended by the Transportation Committee. Any questions? We're ready for the vote.
Vote has started.
All right, thank you, counselors. Item number eight passes. Item number nine?
Item number nine, on page four, is a resolution granting an operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to Passion Williams Love Lift LLC, 1430 Gaston Highway, Suite 116, Unit 469, Birmingham, to be used in the operation of an executive sedan service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city, in accordance with the provisions of Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham 1980, as amended or may be amended.
Motion. Second.
All right, counselors, this is another resolution for permission for Passion Williams Love Lift LLC. There was no recommendation by the Transportation Committee. I'll go ahead and ask the question, do we know why there was no recommendation? Counselor Woods?
Yes, ma'am. Items nine and 10 were also on the same day as item six, which was a no quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, would you allow me then to call both nine and 10 together?
Sure. I also want to point out, there's no correlation between Passion Williams and myself.
And yourself. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you go ahead and read item 10 and we'll vote on both of those at the same time? I did. We thought...
Okay. Item 10 is a resolution granting an operating authority permit with three certificates of public necessity and convenience to Charles Brown Safety Dependable Care Corp., 5880 Waterstone Point, Hoover, Alabama, to be used in the operation of a non-emergency medical service upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with the provisions of Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham 1980, as amended or may be amended.
Thank you. And we need a motion in a second.
I move approval.
All right, thank you. And has it been said, both of these items, they were not recommended due to lack of a quorum. Counselors, any questions? We'll go ahead with the vote.
The vote has started.
All right, thank you, counselors. Items nine and 10 pass. Next item. Next item.
The next item will be on page, it'll be item number 12 on page 14.
Or item 13?
Um, an ordinance to further amend the grants fund budget for the fiscal year ending June.
We didn't take that one off, Madam Clerk.
It was just 14.
It was just 14 was the only one we took off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Not a problem.
I apologize.
That's okay.
All right. 13 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor, what's that? An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal memorandum of agreement with Alabama Agricultural and Mechanical University that allows graduate social work students attending Alabama Agricultural and Mechanical University to volunteer to work with the Community Outreach and Public Education Division for the purpose of providing the streets, I'm scarred, providing the students with an opportunity to gain experience and educational knowledge while providing assistance to the city. The term of the agreement shall be for a period of one year. From its effective date, and under no circumstances shall the term, including any renewal, renewals, exceed a period of three years, and authorizing the mayor to execute any other documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of the agreement. This is a, item of permanent operation, so we need UC First to take it up.
I move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we need a motion.
I move the item.
Second.
All right. Thank you. I do want to add that this item was also recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, is there a question regarding this item? Councilor Moore?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
I had two, two big questions. Uh, one, was there a reason that this didn't come before the Education Committee?
Do you want to refer, do you want to refer it to it, or do you just, are you had additional questions? Yes.
Madam President, to the Chairman's question related to Education Committee, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know. I don't think anybody was intentionally tolding, um, maybe this will be a good time for the Police Department to give you an update to see if it's, um, sufficient enough.
And, yeah, and I guess the reason I'm asking is because one of the, the big questions I wanted to ask about was the Community Outreach and Public Education Division. Um, what is that? Like, where's BP?
Good morning. I'm Captain Blackwell with the Birmingham Police Department and Commander of the Community Outreach and Public Education Division. So, the Community Outreach and Public Education Division, uh, within the Police Department, we do a lot of engagement in the community. So, that's where the community outreach come from. And the education part is, we're responsible for the SROs that goes into the high schools, and we're also responsible for the intern program. So, currently, we have six interns, but they are undergraduates. We have three from UAB, which is working in our real-time crime center. We have two from, um, Miles College, and one from Jacksonville. So, that's where the education part comes in. And we also go out to schools and do speaking engagements, so a lot of that is that education.
Got you. Thank you. Um, yeah, and like I said, I was just curious, um, as to what the program was and, you know, um, yeah, community, uh, Community Outreach and, and Public Education Division wasn't really clear on that. And so, I understand that there are social workers, and so, um, I definitely think that it's a worthwhile program. I just wanted to know more information, so...
Okay. Thank you. Because the social workers also fall under our unit. They're called CSOs. So, they work mainly with mental illness, so they have an opportunity to work with them.
Thank you. And Captain Blackwell, I, I see Councilwoman Clark, you have a question. I just wanted to reiterate for you, Councilor Moore, maybe this would be a great opportunity. We could just get Captain Blackwell to come back either to Education Committee or Committee of the whole. I know some of us are more familiar with some of the, um, services that your, um, division provides, but this is just a good time, opportunity for us to see how far-reaching what we may think of what policing is, but we see other various opportunities, so, thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
I guess my question was similar because it didn't have a department listed. It just had that division, and I was thinking, boy, we need so much public education and, uh, community outreach, so... But I do want to compliment, um, the Police Department for having this, and I think that any way we can expose students to, you know, practical education, uh, career-aligned education, you know, hopefully it'll help us grow our workforce and, and get more positions filled going forward, so, really excited. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Captain Blackwell. Any other questions regarding this item? We're ready for the vote. Thank you, Cap.
Thank you.
The vote has started.
All right. Thank you, counselors. Item number 13 passes. Item 14?
Item 14. On page 14, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the City of Birmingham and AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club in an amount not to exceed $100,000 over a one-year term to provide educational and enrichment services for youth 6 to 18 experiencing academic learning loss due to COVID restrictions on classroom learning, and provide overall academic, academic recovery for disproportionately impacted youth utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funding.
I move approval.
All right. This item was pulled from consent by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to bring some attention to it and commend the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club for the work that they do for youth and providing a safe haven for youth from not just District 8, but all over the city of Birmingham. Um, and programs like these are so critical, uh, in times like these, really at any time, but especially in times like these to promote, uh, acad, well, really academic recovery and academic gains and character building. So, just wanted to commend them, um, and, um, say ARPA funds to the rescue, this, I believe this is what they were intended for, to help, um, steady some organizations that were severely impacted financially, so happy we can do this. And I invite others to support this organization because it does serve, you know, citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Madam Pro Tim?
Um, I just want to congratulate Councilwoman Clark because this is her first ARPA project. I think this is a great way to use the funds to help our kids because I think they were affected the most of all of us during COVID, whether it was their mental health, um, education, a list of other things. And I know that, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, they really like a safe haven for the kids. I remember the CLO talked about how the kids witnessed a lot more, I think, we did, uh, losing their friends to gunshot, gun violence, and so they provided that mental health support. And then I wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Woods, even though his item was on consent, for passing his first ARPA project with the grocery stores. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Pro Tim. Any other questions or comments? Uh, kudos on the accolades to both counselors. Um, we love seeing those ARPA projects getting through. Thank you. We're ready for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Vote has started.
All right. Thank you, counselors. Item number 14 passes. I believe next we have, Madam Clerk, you have two, um, communications? Oh, no, we have item 53.
Item number 50.
53.
Okay. I'm sorry. It is item number 53. No, yeah. Item 53. Uh, a resolution certifying and confirming the results, I'm sorry, it's on page 24. Uh, resolution certifying and confirming the results of the October 18th, 2022 Citizens' Participation Election and Election Contest Results in accordance with section six of the Citizens' Participation Plan.
All right, counselors, can we have a motion in a second so that we can, uh, have this information brought to us?
Move the item. Second.
All right. Thank you. This has been recommended by the Director of Community Development. Um, Mayor, Chief, anything you want to add to this? I know we have the list that's included in our packet.
No, ma'am. We spoke with the legal department this morning, as well as we spoke with Alice Williams of Community Development this morning, and they both gave a thumbs up, so we yield to the council.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I just have a question about, um, how we would go about getting representation for a neighborhood that did not have any one run for office, or if we could just clarify that process.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Alice Williams of Community Development.
Okay.
Good morning, Alice Williams, Deputy Director, Community and Resource Services. Um, the normal process is after the first meeting of the officials swearing in, those people who are interested in serving can come to a neighborhood meeting, which we will facilitate. And from that meeting, we would announce the vacancy, and at the following meeting, which will be in February, we can, they can run for that position. So, it's up to the different residents of each of the neighborhoods. So, we had several that did not have officers. Um, just met a young lady in the hallway from Central Park that mentioned she didn't, but she said she might be interested in service, so we, we do offer that to, um, residents if they are interested in serving.
Okay. And so, you, your staff basically has to organize a gathering of that neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am.
In order for them to make nominations and have a vote take place during that meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could you make sure we know when that is? I know you will.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want to make sure I can go, because I haven't been able to go to a meeting there forever. Ever.
And, and we have received someone who, um, is interested, who's a former officer, but we explained to her to go through this process, so we might have someone coming soon. But we do have a number of vacancies in other neighborhoods, and we're looking at possibly, you know, combining those to join the neighborhoods if no one's interested in serving. So, they will have representation.
I'm just curious, how many out of the 99 had no officers? If you, if you know roughly, if you know exactly, that would be...
Maybe about, maybe about, I want to say almost 10, if I'm not mistaken.
So, didn't have a single officer?
Right. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Maybe close to 10. Not right off the top of my head, not sure.
Okay. Well, it's going to be a busy month for you.
Yes, ma'am, it is. Thank you.
And once we certify these results, I know that there was an unofficial roster or, um, listing, so would this be placed on our city government website?
Yes, ma'am. This will be placed on the website, and will be updated, um, after you vote on it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, counselors? All right. We're ready for the vote. Thank you, Ms. Williams. We appreciate what you do.
Vote has started.
All right. Thank you, counselors. Those results then have been certified from the results of the October 18th, um, so the election, and they will be, uh, updated on the website. And then, as Director Williams, uh, stated, there is a process within each of those neighborhoods where we can, um, get those offices filled. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do you want to go ahead and communicate to us those two items?
Yes, ma'am. Item 54, receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent relative to the roof leakage at the Birmingham Crossplex. And item 55 is receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent relative to the roof leakage at the Birmingham Police West Precinct.
All right. Thank you, counselors. Any questions regarding that communication? Yes, Ms. Abbott?
I do have a question. I don't know whether it's appropriate at this time, but these leaking roofs are in buildings that are relatively new. Do we get warranties on our roofs when we build new buildings?
I see the head nod.
Madam President?
Yes.
To Ms. Abbott's question, the answer is yes. Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
I, just more clarification on these. Um, because of, they, they seem new. It was due to the unprecedented rainfall that we had a couple of weeks ago, and just the support of the, the roofs just didn't have adequate support for those, uh, different roofs. So, we had to do two emergencies, one at the Crossplex and one at the fire station.
Okay. So, you're saying that the roof...
It was, it was overloaded with just the amount of rainfall that we were receiving that particular day.
So, the rainfall damaged the roofs?
Yes, ma'am.
And they weren't built for that kind of rainfall? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, at this time, we'll, uh, turn attention to old and new business. Councilor Clark, um, excuse me, Councilor Tate, I believe you have two items that you wanted to bring to our attention under old business?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, counsel, I would like to call two public safety items up for UC. They were inadvertently left off the, um, agenda for a public hearing on today. So, the applicant late rollers, um, is not present, so I move for a unanimous consent on that one.
Second.
Okay. So, and I also...
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so we got that one.
And now the action you want to take with that item?
And the action that I want to take with that item, Madam President, is I want to send it back to committee.
Second.
Any questions about moving that, that particular item back to committee?
So, which one are we, what are we moving?
Late rollers. Moving late rollers back to the Public Safety Committee. And that's going to be the second item in the package.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Abbott, it's the very last item.
Just to let you know what it is, it's a resolution relative to the application of SNA Investment LLC for an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at the Late Rollers Convenience Store, 1101 Third Avenue, West Suite B.
Perfect.
Hold on. Who am I?
Go ahead. Um, Councilwoman Williams?
I, I thought that we approved the beer and wine license for late rollers and that we, we, we gave them an opportunity with, in regards to the liquor store, to come back.
That's true. You remember, it was two items. One we approved and one we did, um, send back or delayed to allow the owner to come back with, you had questions about safety plan and those type of things, correct?
Correct. And the hours of operation.
And, and this would have been the time that that item would have come up?
Correct.
So, now she wants to take it back to committee?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah, I'm good with it back to committee. I just wanted to clarify from what Madam Clerk wrote.
So, instead of the off-premise beer and wine, it's the class, it was a class one liquor license?
Yeah.
For the next...
Yes.
Okay.
It was two locations. One was the, the convenience store, and it was two items. One was the convenience store, and one was the, the liquor license. So, the young lady did not have all of her, her, she didn't have questions that were raised, like what time would you open and close and a, a safety plan?
Okay. So, that was the one, is Suite A?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a note of that.
Are we clear as that's...
What did we approve?
Yes.
We approved one that the neighborhood was against at 28 to zero, and we just approved it without putting it on the council agenda, and now that neighborhood's going to come get us.
These are two different things.
No, that's what I was explaining, is that, that, that...
Late rollers is also in your package. It is the, the item that's behind the Mosaic 7 LLC. If you keep flipping, you will see the late rollers application.
Okay. I, I was looking at what I think is the first one.
Madam President, um, just for some clarification, Mosaic, I, we may have, did we hear that one? I know we heard of public safety, that's, that's a, um, liquor store over on Oxmore Road.
Right.
Yeah. That hasn't been before the council yet.
The only item that we heard in council meeting with, with three weeks ago, Council Woods, it was late rollers. The young lady came before us. She could not answer questions as to what time. One of the questions was raised was what time would you open and close? The question was, I don't know, basically off the floor traffic. Also, she did break down in court, if you guys remember, cried because her dad, she learned that her, something about her father was ill. And so, she stood before us and said that she did not have her act together, and so that was the one that we delayed.
And this is one now that you're bringing before us that you'd like to take back to committee?
Correct. So, now I'm going to move it back to public safety.
Is both items correct?[1749.61]
I'm sorry?
Both items?
No.
No, just one?
Just one, okay. Because we've already approved one item. You're sending the liquor license or you're sending the?
I have two items. The late rollers is not here. So, that's the item we're talking about currently.
And they just want you to clarify that particular item. This one that we're moving back to committee, that was now is for the late rollers for the liquor license?
For the liquor license, correct.
All right. Okay.
So, the next?
Another one coming up.
So, the next item is?
Okay, wait a minute. Let's go ahead and do that one.
Hold on now. Okay, so, all in favor?
Wait a minute. If you all would hold on, please.
So, on referring the Class 1 liquor license for the Late Rollers Convenience Store back to Public Safety Committee, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. City Attorney, if you would help us with this, please.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure we have clarification. So, Late Rollers had a convenience store and a package store. You all approved the convenience store but delayed on the package stores. Is that correct? It needs to be clear for the record.
I want to be clear. This is one. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Thank you, Attorney King.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you. That particular item is going back to Public Safety. That is another, there's another item, Councilor Tate as well?
And I'll read that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Before I read, I do see for, it is a resolution relative to the application of Moke Shaw 7 LLC for a lounge retail liquor Class 2 license to be used at Liquor Pavilion, 4821, I'm sorry, 2806 Lakeshore Parkway, Suite A 12. And that's the one that's for you now.
And what's your action? You're asking us, Councilor Tate?
Aye, and the applicant is here and wants him to come. So, my action that I'm asking is the, that I want to send this item.
Do you want to bring this before us today?
Yes.
Can we, I want to be sure we can do that because we've not, it's a public hearing is part of this, and we haven't made that known to the public.
I'm sorry. This is the item of, this is a hearing of our issues that parties.
So, Attorney King, I'm going to refer back to Attorney King on this.
Right. It's my recommendation. You all can hear from her today, but taking the vote, I recommend that it go back.
Right, right. That's my recommendation for it, to go back to Public Safety.
Let's go back to Public Safety.
Second. That was a motion, right?
So, the motion is that we're going to take this item back to the Public Safety Committee as well. Councilor Wood?
Are we able to go ahead and set a date for the public hearing today?
That was the question, Councilor, I mean, Attorney King?
Yes, you can go ahead and set that date.
Okay. And what is the time requirement for setting that public hearing?
It's three weeks, if I'm not?
Three weeks, okay.
Three weeks, yes.
So, your motion is to refer this item back to the Public Safety Committee and defer it for three weeks?
No, now we need to change the motion now that we're councilors.
Let me, let me just, Madam President, let's refer back to Attorney King, so we can get some clarity as to next steps.
Right. You all can go ahead and set the public hearing for three weeks.
Okay. So, that'll be my motion, Madam President, for setting a hearing, Public Safety Hearing.
Second.
So, our action now is to, we're taking a motion in a second to set a public hearing, set that date for three weeks.
So, you're going to defer this action for three weeks?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions?
So, this is going to be on our agenda in three weeks?
As a public hearing.
As a public hearing, I.
We're setting it because we've never actually set it. So, we're setting the public hearing date.
I move this action.
Quick question, quick question. So, if we were to send it back to Public Safety, would it be on the agenda for Public Safety to come back to our agenda for next week?
No.
No, okay.
What this action will do is that we're setting the hearing for this committee to come back to the council, where now that we would consider that item during that hearing in three weeks.
Correct. I move to set this for a public hearing in three weeks.
Second.
Of the full council.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. All right, councilors, so we've set that date for three weeks, and with both of those actions have been passed as motion. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, we do have one speaker that has signed up to speak. I would like to entertain the opportunity to allow this resident to speak, and then we could consider, if you all would like to consider, if we could post our announcements from each of our districts following council meeting, rather than going through and having us read those announcements, if it would be your pleasure. Be okay? Because I know, I don't want to lose a quorum for those who want to go to, I'm going to ask for you, that we suspend the rules and allow that to go ahead, to allow the speaker to come up, and then we will go ahead and adjourn following that without our councilor comments. Be okay? All right, thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the speaker's list?
Bridget May.
Hi, Ms. May. Thank you very much. You have three minutes, and if you could tell us your address. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. Let me get my stuff out so I can make sure my three minutes done right.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Bridget May Adams, here from Pratt City, okay? This is what's going on. It doesn't matter that who is in office. I know now that nothing is going to get done on my side of town. I can show up to every meeting. I can come to every meeting. At the end of the day, the product is going to be something totally different than what was promised. My concern is, I don't know if the person that's representing me is speaking loud enough, or speaking to the right people, or is strong enough to push back on some things that can come to my community. I pay my taxes. I shouldn't have to wait on a grant to get my streets paid, okay? I want the city of Birmingham to stop robbing Peter, which is Pratt City, to pay Paul. That is do whatever the city wants to do. I don't know where the money is going, but it's not coming to Pratt City. Now, with Shadow Brook, the mayor said that it would be 48 lots, 52 lots. Now, they want to change it to 63 lots with five common areas in the same area. What is that? We don't want any tiny homes in our community. We don't want any homes for the homeless in our community. I want the city of Birmingham to stop giving us what they want us to have, and please give us what we deserve. I was told that nothing happens on my side of town because that the people that's representing me, they can't go directly to the department heads. Then I was like, okay, I want the people representing me to have the same relationship with the department heads that Abbott has. Because it seemed that no matter what Abbott wants, Abbott gets. I don't know. I don't know where the money is coming from, going. I just know that nothing gets done on my side of town unless it's mediocre. I want the people, I want the city of Birmingham to stop moving dirt in my community. It's enough piles of dirt. That's your terminology, right? Just get in, move a little dirt, make them a little happy, satisfy a few. Well, no more. I'm tired. This is 25 years of lies that the city of Birmingham has given me. One Pratt Park is a joke. It's a crumb compared to what was promised. And where's the money gone, right? Shadow Brook was supposed to have been for the vets and the elderly, and now what is it? The city of Birmingham said that they were going to give us trees to plant on the border. You think we got a tree yet? Trees y'all said that could feed the community, fruit trees. We haven't got a shrub or anything. Avenue W, whatever y'all put it in the middle of the street, the idea was good, but there's no follow-through. I have to drive my car on the side of the street to keep my car from being scraped because there is no grooming, no one there to put the shrubs down, or do anything that's cute in my community. And I'm tired. I want the city of community, or city of Birmingham, to do better about my community that is Pratt City. I know my self-worth. My community knows their self-worth. But the city of Birmingham does not know my community's self-worth.
Thank you, Mrs. May.
I've asked for a meeting with the city council, my mayor. I'm asking for a meeting with you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any other speakers? I think the other one had, all right. Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Abbott?
I'd just like to say that I am very excited that I get everything I want. Mr. Mayor?
Me too.
I'll send you my list.
When I was told that the meeting, I found out that it was a lie, sweet.
Well, thank you.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
25 years of lies. So, what's the truth? I want someone to tell me. Look in my face because I trust no one. If it ain't from the mayor or the person representing me, it's all lies. It's never going to change.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. All right, thank you.
Madam President, I would like to offer that motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll get a second, but I do want to, we don't have any announcements, but I do want to thank our officers on duty today, Cedric Pinkert, Derek Patton, and Austin Willis. Councilors, we were going to ask if you would have your remarks, so that you could bring them next week, or we could post those on our website for any updates.
Just one thing, Budget and Finance, just Budget and Finance, the next Budget and Finance will meet this Monday at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Submissions received after noon will be placed on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have utilities meeting this afternoon at 2 o'clock, and we have Committee of the Whole tomorrow. Thank you very much, councilors.